It is five thirty if we can call the regular board meeting of the Empress Executive Military Schools to order page by stating we in budget to fly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those who need to know, the flag was on the floor at all times. I didn't say state that. Um, call order please.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Dr. Masser.
Present.
Mrs. Wackel.
Present.
We'll take a recommendation to adopt the agenda as it's presented with any additions or addendums that you got today. You have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or comments on that? Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis. Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Dr. Masser.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi. Item five on tonight's agenda is the public hearing. Has anyone signed up to have addresses? I don't believe so. So we've been moved right on to four presentations. I believe Mr. Moltke. Do you have one item one here? I'm sorry. Uh, item A, um, before we move on to the treasurer stuff, okay? Item A is the Empress Board of Education will need to appoint a present pro town to preside over the January eighth organizational meeting. Um.
So we make a motion.
We don't need to make a motion.
Yes.
You can just appoint one. Truthfully, it's the habit.
I'll make a motion this morning.
I did a lot of.
I did.
We have a motion in a second on the floor. Actually, Morgan too.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay, I get a motion in a second. Is there, um, any discussion on that? We've had a little bit of discussion. It's okay. Morgan, anything you want to say?
I just feel like I'm putting myself in a hole right now. He's gonna do it for one day.
Okay. Right. Um, call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Dr. Masser.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi. All right, treasurer's report.
Thank you. We'll be right back.
So you can tell that Mike's running this today.
Well, I was running it and then it kicked me out and I used.
And Mike's like, I don't know.
Right. Okay, well, I can pretty much remember what I put in the side deck. Uh, so one of the things I wanted to talk to you up the board this evening about was, um, on the agenda, um, under business recommendations, we have an architect engineer consulting agreement with Fanning Howie. Fanning Howie is again an AP firm and they're going to be performing an evaluation of the existing facilities in the district, really our core school. Um, to set about identifying, um, long-term capital improvement planning for the district. So we have a basis for our capital projections on the fiber forecast. President Engel had mentioned that we probably needed an independent firm, which we have not used, um, up to this point. Um, just remind you all that Fanning Howie is, um, a pre-procured contract through our schools council to which the portion that we want. So, um, that is a, um, I think a great service that they are going to be providing for us. Um, an independent evaluation of the district to determine a basis for our financial projections and capital planning. Um, can you back up? Was this the first one? This was your first one. Okay. So, um, you're used to seeing this. You see it several times a year, the financial recap. There we go. Brought in delay. Um, so this is November of, of twenty-three, which is fiscal twenty-four, recall, compared to last year's November and November twenty-one. You'll see the month and date numbers for revenue expenditure and on the right are the fiscal year to date numbers. You'll see that in the revenue, um, in the far right, upper right, all of the revenue categories, all lines in the forecast we received for revenue this year, the last year. You'll see, um, on the lower right that we have two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars more expenditures than we have in revenue this year. On the bottom, um, cash balance, I just want to point out that between November twenty-one, twenty-two and the current month, November, we are about one point one million each year less in cash balance. Um, and I say that the large differences are the fair school funding plan is providing greater revenue within lines one oh three five and one oh zero four. That's our unrestricted foundation funding and our restricted foundation funding. Um, and I think that that wants me to be done with the financial recap right now. Um, so we talked about Fanning Howie. Um, one thing I wanted to talk about was in the treasurer's office, Sarah Trigo will be, um, she's requesting unpaid leave. Um, and in her place for ten to twelve hours a week, you'll see Don Jacobs, um, being hired as a consultant. Twenty-five dollars an hour for ten to twelve hours a week, just perform five or six, um, payroll duties to assist my payroll department. Um, so we'll see that, um. I thought I remembered, but I guess I don't. Um, a couple of things on the financials, um, the board meeting minutes, you'll see, uh, special board meeting minutes for November twelfth, when we were at capital conference and, uh, twelve thirteen, which was the final strategic plan for the core team. And then the regular board meeting minutes of November twentieth, um, we have the November financials. And if you recall, that's a cash reconciliation, a financial summary, my fund, a special cost center, the forecast report for general fund and the emergency fund. And then the checklist of all accounts payable, electronic and paper checks that were issued for the month of November. There were a couple of questions about the next item D, which are revisions to appropriations for the month of November. The, um, oh eighteen principals fund at steel needs to be revised, um, thirty thousand dollars additional. Um, the fine arts and, um, Empress School's educational qualification, um, oh two nine funds both need to be increased to match the cash balance in revenue that they're expecting. And then the high school yearbook fund and the AJH snow sports fund both needed an initial appropriation that, um, hadn't been put in the system earlier in the fiscal year. Um, just want to re- remind the board that we, um, in governmental accounting, it's what we call fund accounting. So all of the monies for specific purpose are kept separately. So the general fund that's, that's used for general operations of the district is kept separate from modern retirement, which is a oh two. Permanent improvement levy is the oh oh three fund. Our student activities are two hundred funds. Our principals' funds are oh eighteen funds. So, um, all of these appropriations are based on the amount of cash plus the revenue they expect to receive in one year. The appropriation cannot exceed cash plus expected revenue. Um, just a little bit about fund accounting. And then, uh, we have an additional advance of funds. You'll recall that last month there was, uh, an advance of funds also for the same two funds. And this just has to do with, um, the final expenditure report. Um, the monies that we requested in that final expenditure report at the end of September have not yet been given us. Um, there has been a slow up, slowdown, um, at the Department of Education workforce. It's not just that chained over from ODE to ODU, but it has to do with the end of the federal fiscal year as well, which is the end of September. So, um, we will be expecting these funds that are in advance to our professor and to each child grade group. Item S is, um, something that you only see typically once a year. It is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates is determined by the budget commission of the rank county. And the reason why it's being altered now is because in November, the district, um, was able to pass the PI replacement levy. So for twenty-three, um, taxes for twenty-three, we have to adjust these, the taxation requires us. We will be expecting then greater PI fund, um, revenues come, um, the twenty twenty-three collection, which starts in February, March, and then we have another one in July, August. And then the donations, um, you guys still can't get in? Try and, it's okay. I can't recall if there's anything else on my slides. Does anybody have any questions about what I reported on this evening?
Still have not entertained a motion then, for that?
Yes.
So we entertain a motion for the treasurer's recommendations. We have a motion in a second. Is there questions or comments or discussion on items A or G? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Dr. Masser.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi. Motion passed. Superintendent's report.
Hold on.
I see how it is.
Oh, you see. That's why I was thinking too.
Okay, a couple of updates. Um, first, first one, um, on, on the agenda is, um, proposal from GPD Architect, Architect Group for Transportation Center. Up on the screen, you can see their estimated cost for construction, about ten point six million, soft cost about two million for total project cost. Right now around twelve point six million, which is right in the ballpark of what we were figuring. Um, I did clarify for the soft cost, you know, this contract to work with them is about seven hundred twenty-four thousand. So I did find out from them that the soft cost does include this proposal and it includes, uh, an estimation for construction, construction manager of risk, if we were to go that way. So, uh, that is right now the total cost as we see it. So we're not adding on tech, actually GPD's numbers for this proposal and any, um, construction manager of risk. So that, that's good news. Um, slide.
Okay.
Maybe. Nope.
I said go ahead.
Well, maybe, maybe it's gonna take, but, um, the next slide was just the athletic parts, uh, which includes, uh, turf track, tennis courts, newsstands. Everything that we had included in the project. And that just came in, actually, we got it last week and I, I went back and forth only to add some other things on there to make sure we weren't missing anything. Like, for example, removal of some of the outbuildings that are in other boards, press that kind of get rid of. That wasn't really listed, not that they needed it, but I just wanted to make sure that they were, as many things were listed as possible, um, on their actual document. So we got that back on Friday. I talked with them again more today. So for right now, the estimated construction costs for all the athletic upgrades, about two point eight million, soft cost around half a million. For total project cost, about three point four billion. So again, that includes their, their cost of the proposal on the agenda, and also any construction manager risk costs that we'd be throwing that route as well. So right now, combined, uh, for both projects, for all the projects, we're about sixteen million dollars. So again, we're looking to fund all these projects through the increase of the levy that we had on, on the ballot in November. And at that time, we're projected to bring about seventeen million additional, or at least funds to, to finance seventeen million dollar projects. So we're right in the ballpark of where we want to be with some leeway right now. Again, there could always be additional costs that come up as far as with the site, so there might be some, um, EPA regulations or maybe there's some weapons things we have to take care of. Maybe at the athletic fields or some, uh, water retention we have to kind of improve. So, uh, those can always, you know, it's like the cost, but it looks like right now we're right in the ballpark of where we want to be with some room. So that's real good news right now. Any questions about that? Yes.
Um, so if we were to get to that point of, oh, we're, you know, seeing these additional costs, do you have a plan in mind of, I guess you have a prioritization unless we're those athletic.
Well, so you're also gonna approve the contract for another year of work with our financial advisor, David Compton, Mark. So, um, my thought was we were up with contact David and Amy and David and I will get together and we will then, using his expertise, maybe come back in January and kind of give an update of where we're at with, um, I guess market rates and interest rates and all that to see where we might be as far as collecting money. And then also, um, yeah, what are some, what are some plans that we should have in place beforehand if costs go up? Like, what are some plans you have in place to maybe finance that if costs go up? Or what are some other things we might have that could contribute toward the project? Um, and that might include a prior, prioritization of, of parts of the project as well. So my thought would be to come back maybe around January time, if that's okay, so that we can get ahead of it and if I the board knows exactly where we're at in case those things happen. Is that, oh?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah. Are you gonna bring back the people that were on the levy committee, be a part of anything, side of serving, they worked really hard, you know, to get that levy passed and to see them be a part of making, making big decisions of what they think that the community wants? I don't know if we have plenty.
Um, no, I thought about that right now. We certainly could bring them back as we, um, serve them. Make a person.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did release the, um, survey to the community for anyone who wanted to share some input, as well as I've met with a few groups already to gather their input. Um, I shared with Amy, um, there aren't any kind of wild and amazing, out of the box, crazy, expensive ideas. They want just some things fixed and how they might be able to, uh, cooperate together, uh, both in transportation, uh, vehicles. Just to make sure we have what we need at the right spot.
And we're still gonna have somebody on that. I'm going to assume too, one, I'm sure what's good and the pros and cons. And I'm sure whatever side you're on, they're gonna want that side, you know what I mean?
Yes.
I think it would be good for us to hear for both sides.
Absolutely, yeah.
Like, when do you think this will go out for bid?
I think we're still, yeah, um, I still think we're looking a couple of months away. And again, the, the plan is that this will take place over the course of the next like two years, that hopefully open both in, um, August, September, two thousand twenty-five. So, um, I don't, there's no, there's no point in trying to rush anything. Again, even if we were trying to rush anything, there's no way Transportation Center would be built by August. Or some of the athletic careers, where some of the vendors and businesses be working with, they have other things planned for the summer already, so. That's what we're looking kind of.
And, and these numbers that you presented, these have been reworked numbers since we've heard from GPD and the member.
Yes, yes, some of the, some of the square footage and they've adjusted like this cost per square foot based on current like market trends right now. So, um, what they said is accurate as of, of last week. Any other questions? Next update, real quick, if it works. Here's the board asked to move forward with the steel special education classroom renovation and restrooms. And so, uh, they're working on that right now. GPD should add that to us for a January board meeting. Um, as you can see, um, not much has been tweaked since last time that we designed or came up with a special education classroom facility for them. Uh, I think Chuck added LED lights or something, minor. Uh, but we've also gone back and I have a few pictures, uh, from, actually, the two in the middle there are from Hudson. They did a similar kind of situation where all the restrooms are individualized. Um, and the company that they used for the, um, the walls and the gray barrier, everything of that, um, that's something, that's something we're considering doing as well. So it's kind of like a pre-made product for restrooms. So not like actually building walls in between each restroom and all that. So that's, that would be a very, um, probably positive effect and a great way to do it. Uh, and then also on the right, you see, this is a concept from Empress School where exactly what we're thinking. So the restroom area, you know, it's individual, uh, restroom for each student. And then the out kind of hallway, but that in the hallway is, uh, where the, um, sinks are for washing hands and things like that. This one is kind of open. Ours would be open too. We probably would have glass just to, you know, the interaction between those at the restroom area and those in the hall walking by, they, they just a little bit. But that's the kind of concept that we've kind of come up with that, that GPD's working on right now. Any questions on that?
Much, if we're thinking about glass, how much, like glass here? Is it a glass?
Um, probably similar like what we have here where they have glass just halfway up the shelf to, you know. But we, we can discuss that if there's safety glass or there's other, other options we could talk about. We just wanted to be realistic. Everybody wants to splash water in the hallway if our favorite house keep walking by. Maybe the high school students. Yes, so. Your questions for Michael? All right, next. So I have a visitor, um, guest with us today, James Rajah. James, and it's you.
Yes.
Um, I told him I'd give him five to about ten minutes. So, um, uh, he's from Highland, which is a turnkey solution for school bus electrification. So, um, as I've been doing with all the other projects, we've been meeting with a lot of different vendors and so on. And I met with Jay, actually Chuck, T and I met with James. Um, again, just as a possibility down the road, um, as we know, this building, we want to be forty, fifty years in the use of that timeframe. So, um, I, I don't know whether there'll, there'll be electric buses running on every school bus on the road in five, ten, fifteen, or twenty or fifty years. But, um, if we're going to build a transportation center, I do want to consider having infrastructure in place in case, um, we do go down the path that there is by my, by the government in, in a decade or two about, um, electric buses. So James is here to speak a little bit on, um, what is, was like, yes.
Kitchen. First of all, thank you for having me and thank you for the board for having me. Um, my name is James Rajah. I'm the regional business manager for Highland Electric Leaks. Um, I cover the Midwest. I cover nine states. But Ohio is my heart and soul because I live there. I grew up in Still, Ohio, and I still live there. And I'm also a substitute bus driver. So I walk the talk, I guess. Um, I offer my job, but it was an effort, so. Uh, a little bit about Highland is, uh, we were started in, uh, twenty nineteen. About four years old, we capitalized for about two hundred and fifty million dollars. And so far, we've, uh, found incentives for, the next slide please.
Maybe.
Uh, so far, we've, uh, acquired about sixty million dollars for schools, uh, throughout the country. We're in thirty states plus Canada. Uh, we have, uh, right now, five hundred buses under contract. And, uh, come January, that should double because we work very closely with EPA. As you know, EPA is, uh, has a lot of funds available right now, over five, uh, rounds of five billion dollars. We are closing out in round two right now and round three is coming up. And this round, the, uh, non-priority schools like yourselves, uh, are eligible for up to two hundred thousand dollars for bus. And you can apply for up to twenty-five buses. Um, so whether you work with us or not, we, uh, urge you to at least apply because, uh, that five billion dollars is slowly declining, right, uh, through different rounds. Um, let's see, it's like this. So what we do is we're a turnkey solution. Um, when you get the buses, if you're a lot of buses, we can, um, help you with all the grants and incentives as well as we can put the infrastructure for your, uh, for your schools. I saw the transportation that you're thinking ahead, thirty years ahead and building a, um, a depot that's in-house for, for vehicles. Perfect for electric buses. Is the way these work opt, the optimally is if they're under route and the, uh, the electric batteries are at ambient temperature and they work the most efficient that way. Um, feel free to ask any questions along the way, too, please. Um, can you get to the next slide, GPD, please?
Thank you.
Yes. Um, so we'd like to be your partner for the electrification. We can, uh, look for all the grants and incentives. We do the financing. We do the permitting and construction. We do the smart charging, do the project management. We train your staff, uh, as well as the drivers and, uh, maintenance reimbursement, uh, bus charger procurement and fueling electricity. And what that means is, uh, we're taking your transportation from capital expense to a, uh, to operation expense. So when we put this program together, we can, uh, uh, have a contract for these vehicles that would pay for, uh, per bus once a year. So what that means is, uh, and when you're paying once a year per bus, that means it's, uh, purely a, um, let's say, it's purely, um, where we have to perform. Those buses have to be working throughout the year, otherwise you don't pay. So that's how this works. Um, so let's say you would like to start with five buses initially. Um, we're gonna have, I believe, thirty buses, yeah. Uh, that would be adequate because this first generation of buses, uh, this generation of buses, they can do about hundred and thirty-five miles per full charge. But, uh, so if you have five or six or ten routes that are under eighty miles, it would work perfect. Okay? Uh, and as the efficiencies get better, you can add more buses. Now, what we do is if you're putting in, forgetting five buses, um, we could set up a, a program where we build infrastructure for twenty buses, let's say, so you look into the future. Cause you want to dig up the ground ones, you want to put all this in ones, because if you want to try to do it later, it's gonna cost more. So as you get more buses, we'll have the infrastructure ready for you. So that's how that would work. Um, so what we're also trying to do is, uh, how we make money is we amortize it over time. Ten, twelve, fifteen years, whatever works, uh, for you, uh, the most efficiently. And so, um, if you have, uh, if you have, uh, let's say five buses and, um, you're paying once a year per bus, uh, we're trying to be in parity with what you're paying for your diesel buses now. Now, these buses cost three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars right now. But with the EPA program, they can, uh, produce up to two hundred thousand dollars per bus. And the rest of it, we can finance for you. And that's how that would. Do you have any? Yeah.
Feel free to use this.
Yeah. Uh, I, I would like everybody to see it, but unfortunately you can't.
Sorry, Zach.
If you can send the.
I'm absolutely welcome.
Yeah. Um, do you have any questions so far? Yes.
He said about training, um, some of the mechanical, mechanic staff. What's all involved with that is converting our, um, diesel mechanics, now our gas, to these guys.
So first of all, the, uh, the maintenance will be much slower, obviously, because there's less moving parts. Now, if you're using a certain OEM right now, sort of, if it's Bluebird or International or Thomas, whoever you use right now, we can get you those same buses, same electric buses, and a lot of the components are the same. Like, uh, the, the, uh, the brakes, the suspension, all of those other things are the same. So you probably already have parts for those. And, um, all of those will be exactly the same. If it's more of a critical, uh, issue, we say send it back to the dealer and you would pay for it. We would also pay for your maintenance, whatever your hourly rate is here, we would also reimburse you for that. So whatever your mechanics are working out on those buses, we would pay.
Um, from, I guess from the timeframe, getting the guys ramped up to know these buses.
Yeah.
What are we looking at?
Um, not very long at all. Um, not very long.
That's included in your program?
Yes, we, it's included in our program. And, you know, there's not damage maintenance because there's no, uh, engine, there's no transmission, there's no exhaust, so don't have to worry about that. It's the regular, um, preliminary maintenance that they would do, the preempt, preempt, uh, uh, the maintenance, uh, like the brakes, suspension.
Yes. One other one. What, um, what's the lifespan of these batteries?
So, uh, doing the program with us is if you have a ten-year, twelve-year, fifteen-year contract, we So, uh, doing the program with us is if you have a ten-year, twelve-year, fifteen-year contract, we cover everything completely. So if the battery goes out in year nine, we replace it. It goes out in year eleven, we replace it. Right now, those batteries cost about a hundred thousand dollars each. So we cover everything, including tires. We cover everything, except for two things, X of God and X of children. And X of children is where they, you know, that lies a seat or whatever, so we can't cover that. But everything else is fully covered.
And that's when we're under your plan, correct?
Correct.
So what happens when the plan is over and we're on our own?
Um, so the infrastructure part is yours then, completely. Uh, what we like to do, we like to have you as a customer for a long period of time. So, um, when those buses are done, like in ten years, we can get you more buses. Or if you decide to go a different way, you can go ahead and do it. Now, those buses will be titled under our name because, uh, we get better depreciation. It's a public-private partnership. We get better depreciation. That's how we bring the price down. But if you wanted to buy it at the end of the, uh, the contract, you can. But at that point, they're not gonna be worth anything. Because right now, uh, a ten-year-old bus, you know, pretty much the, uh, the body melts away. But the, uh, the powertrain will still be good, the battery will still be good, probably about eighty-five percent efficient is what they're saying. We'll take that back and we'll reprocess it.
Okay, and you you mentioned the imminent temperature. What what happens extreme cold, extreme heat?
Yeah, so we have buses in Alaska, we have Vermont, Maine, they're all working, uh, they're all working great right now.
Does one hundred and thirty-five miles change?
It depends on the terrain, it depends on the temperature. And that's why we're saying if you have routes, probably eighty miles or ninety miles, it does mean it's completely perfect. And that's because of one charge. Now, um, the way we, our program works is we work with the utility companies also. We make a deal with them. We'll be the client of the, uh, utility company. So we wanted to power those buses at low peak hours and, uh, have them run, they'll be ready to run the next morning. There's also another program, it's not available in Ohio yet, it's called V two G, which is Vehicle to Grid. What that means is when the buses aren't being used, like, let's say in the summertime, these, let's say these five buses aren't being used, they can put energy back into the grid. And that is also a revenue source. Our buses in, um, Vermont are getting about ten to twelve thousand dollars a year in revenue.
Is that a revenue for your company or for the district?
It'll be for us because that's, uh, we calculate all that out to bring the price down in the contract as much as possible. It's not available here yet.
Are are the buses capital assets of the district?
Um, they are not. It'll be more of an operational expense.
So it's not, it's not a lease expenditure?
Um, it it'll be like an operational expense, and we call it, "Electrication is a Service." So they're almost like E-bucks.
What is the the cash outlay for the district for a year for a single bus?
Um, let's say you get two hundred thousand dollars per bus. It'll be about, conservatively, about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. That includes all the fuel, all the maintenance, everything. So that's probably close to be very with what you're paying for your diesel buses now for the diesel fuel. You don't have that fluctuation. You'll have a very, um, uh, predictable budget with these vehicles and chains. There'll be probably a three percent accelerator of the year. That's it.
You mentioned the charging. Roughly, how many amps does that per bus or per charging station would it pull? As far as the power grid?
Um, we will talk with the utility company, see what's available here. And we'll have our engineers come out and see all of it and work all that out. The interconnection with the utility company is about a hundred thousand dollars too. So we'll invest heavily upfront in this project. And you're probably asking, you're probably thinking, you know, how does Highland make money on this? Uh, we won't make any money until probably year eight because we'll pay heavily, uh, investing for it. We're hoping you're gonna be customers on the road for us.
I mean, with with your experience, how how many amps does a bus take to charge?
Um, it depends on the bus that you'll be getting. Um, uh, I can't answer that. I can get you that answer depending on if you use IC or, uh, because different buses have different, uh, like different.
An average?
Um, in a, in a, uh, it'll take, uh, probably four hundred eighty volts and the average will be probably, uh, I think sixty-six kilovolts. I think we're. Yeah. And I can get you a better answer for that, sorry. Because there's different manufacturers, they have different batteries. But whatever it is, um, we will work with utility companies and depending on how much you get allocated, we will, we will buckle it out. Um, for instance, another Ohio company, uh, they applied on their own, they got some buses, they didn't plan out ahead. And, uh, the buses came and then they, uh, contracted for chargers. Chargers wouldn't reach the buses. So the buses aren't working. Now they're just sitting still. So, um, and that kind of story goes out, everybody hears about it, and then they say, "Look, your buses don't work." That's not the case. In Montgomery County, Maryland, we have three hundred and twenty-six buses out. They have a fleet of over fourteen hundred. We built five depots. I think these are some of the pictures on those. We built five depots at their location. And, uh, there's little nuanced problems, but even before the problems happen, we'll know about it uh, because of the smart charging and, uh, the telemetrics we have. Uh, we'll know exactly what's wrong with it. Uh, so some of the issues, we knew it before the manufacturing happened because we have so many buses up and we can fix it right away. So.
Are those school buses or city buses?
They're all school buses.
They're all school buses?
Yeah, we only deal with school buses.
Okay.
How do you deal with, um, yes, local electric companies, like in terms of power outages? Because I know we're on the range, right, and it's just power outage.
Yeah, um, they are, everyone is building up their infrastructure. But, um, and we hear this quite often, but, uh, in reality, you know, if the power goes out, most likely the school's in a flake. So, um, but if the buses are charged properly, the buses will be ready to go.
Our our luxury comes to the city here in Minneapolis.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's doable, I guess, as a self-aware. Just because we're not a highway center, Dominion, I mean, so it's smaller grid, I guess. So how how have you experienced anything like that?
We have, uh, we have a, uh, a project in southern Illinois, very rural. Um, they applied and they got seventeen buses. And they were through a contractor and, uh, they decided to go in-house and get the buses. Now, the utility company was a co-op. And the utility company's all about it because they, uh, they're thinking, once the, uh, vehicle, the grid comes out, they can put energy back into the grid. They want to be, um, the head of the system right now, so.
Anything on the map here, you can see some of the projects we have.
It'd be the main, the ship's main.
It would be, it would be.
It'd be the main, Ohio best.
Oh, a new place.
A new place.
We're not gonna get. But there was talk when we first met, and there's one in utilities down there.
If there was a hand station.
Yeah, and, um, uh, eventually, there's gonna be mandate across the country, all the public, uh, institutions are gonna have to buy electric. And so far, and it's happening in the east coast and the west coast, and everything finally comes out to the Midwest. So it's gonna happen eventually, so it's most likely you need to get ahead of the game a little bit. Um, and like I said, even if you don't use us, our service, please apply for this and see what funds are available for your school.
The concern I have, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, why, why the money's there, the grants are there, two hundred thousand a bus, but I I can't see that being there forever.
That's right.
So what happens in year twelve when we go to get new buses?
Well, uh, the way we have, uh, forecasted is the, uh, the manufacturer is gonna start building less and less diesel buses because it costs more for them to make because there's more moving parts. So it's gonna start coming down. The prices are gonna start coming down. It's, oh, well, it's it's gonna have to. It's gonna have to. The, uh, the problem with the EPA right now, and we work with them just fine, is they started giving up three hundred and seventy-five thousand per bus in the first round, which means the manufacturer is saying, "Well, that's what the cost of the buses is." You know, because that's what's available. So as the price, uh, as incentives start coming down, the price will subside.
Were you at the Capitol Conference?
I was, yes.
Um, what's the difference between, uh, if it's generation two, or what generation bus are we on?
We're still a generation one.
Because they were saying they were the generate and, and whatever that was.
Yeah.
This generation, what's the difference between this generation and round one?
Uh, well, we're still in, uh, we're still in the first generation of buses, but round one and round two will get the first generation buses. Round three, maybe a different generation comes out. Because when all of this happens and everything gets, uh, priced out, like that, generation two product could probably come out. So even if you apply for these buses now, it's probably gonna be end of twenty twenty-five before you think the buses in the project. Now, the infrastructure, we can build in about five months. And give that set up. And if you need anything additional done to your, um, eskerage, we can put that in the contract. And it'll be a operation expense.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll get the slides to you.
I'll get my reading lessons. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
That entire report.
We don't know that.
Sarah.
Okay, um, yeah, that's not without my screen. So we're gonna take a break from the, um, technical difficulties. I apologize for those. Um, I had a couple videos, quick videos I wanted to show you, um, just about, um, all of you are aware of all of the evening events and things that that have been going on, um, here in the district. Um, this tends to be a very busy time of year, but there have been a couple, um, events that have happened during the day in the past, um, week or so. And last week, um, we had the opportunity, our sixth graders all went to the courthouse to do mock trial. Well, one of our, um, sixth grade classes, Jamie Sexton's class, did the opportunity to present their case at the courthouse. So they did it on, um, Thursday or Friday last week to, um, and so we got an opportunity to go see them at Junior High in the C L C. And it was really cool seeing, um, uh, the Honorable Natalie Hosfelder presiding over the court, sixth grade court. And the, um, kids really worked hard. They were cross-examining their witnesses and calling witnesses. And, um, they are truly being evaluated by a jury of their peers. And so, so that was a really, really cool event, um, to be able to experience. And then Friday was our fourth grade Famous Ohioans, um, Wax Museum. And I have never been more impressed with fourth graders. I mean, I'm always impressed by fourth graders. But they were so into this project, um, you know, you walked around to the different, um, Famous Ohioans, and I got to talk with Benjamin Harrison. I've talked to several Orville and Rover Rice, um, Nancy Cartwright, who was Bart Simpson, I didn't know, is from Ohio. And R L Stein from the Goosebumps series and Dave Toki from Captain Underpants fame. Um, and these, the the children would, you know, really, you know, "Do you know who I am?" And and give this this very impressive little speech. And they had their PowerPoint presentation and their timelines. And it was just a really, really exciting, um, event. And so when you see the slides, there will be a little video of that too. Um, it was very well attended. And then today, um, we had a very exciting visit. Mr. Molnar and I, um, participated in a meeting that was requested by, I'm gonna say his last name wrong, but his name was Pete Lupita. And he is the gentleman who has spearheaded the Purple Star designations throughout the state. And, um, he came with, we'll say these, Mrs. Cammie Puff, who is a U S Army veteran and key member of Ohio's M I C three State Council and Purple Star Schools Advisory Board with the Executive Office of the Honorable Mike DeWine Governor. Um, and Mr. Chip Merkel, who's a retired educator and key member of Ohio's M I C three State Council and Purple Star's Advisory Board of the Army and National Guard. And they had, um, gone to the national conference, which Amanda Sears presented at, and she presented what our buildings have done to support our military families. And, um, so Amanda Sears gave her presentation, Mike Edwards, who is our social studies teacher up here at the high school, teaches American history and military history, um, presented all the things that we do to help support our military families. And they presented us with a coin for each of our buildings. I'm gonna pass these around. And explained that the coin is a, um, tradition that goes back to World War One in the military where, um, individuals who were serving would come across, um, their brothers or sisters in arms and on the battlefield, and they would present one another in a coin with this, with a coin as just kind of a, a mark of solidarity. And so this is a very, very, um, uh, distinguished award for all of us to get. They presented it to us. Um, so we are hoping to have these displayed, um, in each of the buildings to help support our, um, uh, designations. All four of our buildings have a Purple Star designation. And and this is a big deal because out of all of the school districts and all of the school buildings in, um, the state of Ohio, only fifteen percent of them have received a Purple Star designation. And our entire district has achieved that in each of our buildings. And so, um, they were very proud, very, very complimentary of Amanda Sears and Mike Edwards and and the Flock family and all of the work that they've done to kind of help build those bridges for our, and show support for our military families. So it's a really, really cool, um, presentation to be a part of, uh, this morning. Once you see the slides, you will see a picture of all of us by the banner. Um, so stay tuned for that. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah?
Not a question, but I will say Mrs. Springer was very upset that she did not get to do fourth grade Wax Museum.
It was Super Bowl.
Yes.
Even at Musa Springs, it seemed like, because our fourth grade was in the event, so.
I looked for it.
That was very cool. It's very cool.
Thank you. Go back and repeat that.
I was gonna say, nature's such a good reason.
Right, right, all those good reasons. Maybe we'll make that work.
I don't think they'll want to do that. It's, uh, I'm putting it in the notes. Uh, J B S report. Um, J B S met, uh, West Thursday evening, um, to wrap up the year. Um, nothing, we're still working. We're starting, as I told you last month, uh, some numbers are coming in to start some of the preliminary work and some of the things that need to happen at the J B S. Uh, we haven't been gotten any more update on that currently. Uh, from some of the programs that I spoke about, that's still the top priority out there. They're done with school tomorrow as well. Uh, today was cookie pickup day. Wink Zeta sales were all done, so everything is wrapping down. So, um, any questions? I'd be glad to entertain them. From that perspective, we know there'll be three new board members heading to J B S because of elections. So, um, there's a board member from Bylen that's been, has been there probably twenty-seven years. It will not be returning, so, uh, we have spearheaded a lot of the facilities, so it there's gonna be a little changes in some of those kind of places. That's the same. Avon Lake will have a new board now, um, as will, uh, A. Okay, so there's where we are. Board discussions. You ended nothing this evening?
No, we'll talk about training, I guess, next month.
Okay. Uh, just a couple of things. I think that we need to make sure that we know that we thank the committee who worked on the levy, levy, yeah, I didn't think about wording levy. I'm sure we have done that. I just think that I'm sure we have done that, I just think that, you know, we probably need to give a public knowledge with to them that they did an outstanding job, that without their help, without their commitment to that, it did not as easy as it was from that perspective, I think that's very vital. Probably we thank that entire committee for everything that they have done did to make that a success for us. Uh, anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move right along to the personnel recommendations.
Yeah, we have a series of recommendations this evening that you've had a chance to look at, ask questions about. And so I'm going to recommend personnel items A through P for the board.
Do you have a motion in a second, please? Comments and discussion. I know that there was a comment about the drama advisor, we don't need. Do we have any insights to why that really happened?
I think there are a couple different factors involved, and one, too much, I think it's personal and some of it's just just the degree of work and what needs to be done, and against what the personal reasons as well. So about the about switching back and forth, about having it then pulling out and.
Well, I just only ask that because I know it's a club, we know it's a draw. And I know sometimes we have inherent involved, but sometimes there's some issues there that needs the advisor or in-person to have some scratch. So I just wanted to make sure that it's an internal thing happening there that we should all just be aware of.
They only had one meeting for the year, so they're not gonna hear any of it at all.
Well, I will say that she was wonderful. She volunteered for our events and she actually put a Christmas tree costume on. And when the choir started singing, oh, Christmas tree, she she was like the hit of the show the whole night, the tent building was awesome.
Well, and when I've spoken to her, she's always been very upbeat and pleasant about that. So I just wanted to know if there was anything internal that was causing this.
That's what we mean, that I'm going to, but she's also part of the high school program, which is excellent as well.
Right, right, absolutely, I understand that, I think there's a lot on your plate.
Yeah, very.
And that she has smaller children as well, I believe, correct? So I I mean, I wondered how she did some of that all the time, because she'd never be holding, so.
And going back to last year, the high school program this year as well, trying to find assistant or someone, she had to go around to step up. We have subordinates available, but you know, it's it's hard finding someone willing to do that. And then, yeah, it does fall on maybe the lead person to do it all themselves, and so this is a lot. Because she features almost every single night and to try to head up to high school and junior high and take on all of the tech responsibilities and sets and everything, it is a lot, it is a lot.
Oh, but you. You know, any other questions on any of those things from? Eleven A. None, all the roll.
Mrs. Wackels?
Hi.
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mrs. Gellis?
Hi.
Mr. Zampa?
Hi.
Mr. Engels?
Well, just a few educational recommendations, including next school year's district calendar. So I'd like to recommend education items twelve A through twelve, that's.
We have a motion for call A for that. Second?
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion or comments on any of those items, secure twelve.
Just a comment on the, I think that's really cool that the net access ticket and the grants and all these other.
I did have one question, and I did have Mr. Molnar already about the calendar, I just looked at that. Because spring break is so far apart from Easter, Easter just ends up being a two-day weekend. And I didn't know, and like in the past, it's sometimes like put it up or whatever, and then either the Friday or the Monday is off. And I didn't know it. It just seems like as a parent, if anyone's traveling or anything, I don't know if you have like a lot of people out, either the Friday or the Monday or I'm sure obvious day when your people are early, so they seem to Friday, what was the calendar? I just, I thought and I thought that was off, it just had to be a.
Yeah, I mean, as I mentioned, we do have some students that probably miss it, if the Friday or Monday after, but it's never been a large, yeah, large group where it affects education in schools.
But it's more of a Friday.
Yeah, that Friday on the New Year's Day.
They do.
But that's why I thought it was off. And I feel like in the past, it was out of three-day weekend.
It's been some years, it's been it's all dependent on the calendar of where things fall in the year. Sometimes there's a break.
I remember, I didn't realize life on the.
They like a Friday or a Tuesday.
I remember that Friday.
I'm sorry, we're working on that Friday?
Yes.
I had not, I didn't realize. Yeah, I thought once. So what what I mean.
So what happens next?
Well, the question is though, is if if we were asking, could we have a Friday off? Does that add a day to the end of the schedule?
So the options are adding at the beginning, the end, or maybe like a good winter break somewhere that's not summer, right? So so I mean, those, you know, we work with ATA, so I gave all those options to ATA.
Okay.
And they came back and they decided that the calendar as is.
Okay.
Because they they prefer two weeks over over winter break, they prefer ending before June, they prefer, you know, where they start in August, so.
That's not true, I was one this year.
They they did it.
They they did it now.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them did, though, I just. I just, I just show up. This is what happens.
I think it's the ATA exec, but you guys don't see it on calendars or book writing like that, correct? Yeah, no, I think it's just the ATA exec board that kind of works out the calendar, so. Yeah, when it comes to those kind of things, I mean, again, most of it doesn't matter, we're working, when school starts, I have to go over during break. So whenever the calendar is up, it's good for me.
Any other questions? See, are there any questions, all the roll.
Mrs. Gellis?
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels?
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Zampa?
I don't.
Mr. Engels?
Aye.
Not afraid of.
Uh, thirteen, business recommendations, Mr. Molnar?
Yes, a few business recommendations according to from GPD architect group that I mentioned. So I'd like to recommend items thirteen A through.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Second.
So any discussion or comments on thirteen A to rule out? During the round or seeing now, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gellis?
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels?
Hi.
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Zampa?
Hi.
Mr. Engels?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item fourteen is we take a motion to move into executive discussions, discuss a personnel topic with possible action to take to happen. Do you have a motion in a second as a discussion or comment? During night, please call the roll.
Mr. Zampa?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Hi.
Mr. Mrs. Gellis?
Hi.
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Engels?